Yes, thanks for recording, Mr. Speaker. In particular, I want to thank the those of us on the West Coast, it's very early over there. Thanks for joining. As you've noticed, the call will be recorded so that those of us who miss or want to watch slash listen to this again, they'll be able to do so. Advanced notice, I am on the road. Having said that, we had about two or three other cohorts. If anything happens, they will continue from where I stopped off. So, but without further ado, I'd like to call on Mr. Victoria to give us a short prayer. Thank you.
Father Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the gift of good health. We thank you for the gift of community. We thank you for the lives of our loved ones far and near. We pray, oh God, that as we come together this morning, that your presence will be with us and you would guide us in our deliberations. And for those who are joining us, may they know peace, may they know joy and prosperity and abundance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Well, thank you very much. We'll go to the next item, the agenda, which is the President's remarks. Again, I thank everyone for joining, for those who are joining for the first time, or may have been wondering why we have these virtual town halls. It is something this administration came up with so that the general membership is able to be kept abreast with respect to things that are happening or that will be happening. In particular, things that may be introduced at council meetings for approval, which will then move on to the convention for ratification. A lot of people have expressed positive feedback with this because instead of waiting to hear things every three, four months, or like I said, at council meetings or conventions for the first time, they are able to tune into these town halls to get that information firsthand. And I would encourage everyone to please share this information with Paul and Sundry. I hope that today's town hall will be no exception. Before I go further, I would like to formally introduce our candidate for Akisun USA's first National Financial Secretary. For those who attended the convention in Atlanta 2021, there was a constitutional amendment, well, among others, which was to create the Office of National Financial Secretary. That, you know, currently the treasurer pretty much does both roles, but now we've separated it out. And furthermore, the constitution gave chapters the ability to go outside of their chapters as the Hussin Secretariat to find other officers, if need be, with the exception of national president, president and secretary. The announcement was sent out at the time, and then after much searching, we were able to appoint Mr. Bassi, the Buddha of Akisun Dallas. So, Mr. Buddha, if you're on and not already, share your video so people could see you, even if it's for a few seconds, and come over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not video ready, but but my voice is good. Is that all right?
Okay, for now, that's okay. But you better show your face at the council meeting in Dallas.
I will definitely show my face at the counting council meeting. So, I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve. It's a great opportunity and appreciate the work that your administration has been doing and the progress that Akisun is making. So I'm very happy to be a part of that process. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Buddha, for the benefit of all countries and wealth of knowledge in the nonprofit space, especially as it relates to IT, so we're going to be tapping on that knowledge. Hopefully, by the time this administration is over, next year, that's 2024, we'll be able to implement many of those measures for the benefit of the association. Well, if you are not talking, put yourself on your, I guess, the cohort would be aware of that too. Thank you. All right, Mr. Speaker, please share the screen for the presentation. And while he's doing that, I'll just have a few announcements. Number one, we're going to be having our second national council meeting in Dallas.
Mr. President, which presentation?
So, the PowerPoint that I sent you, the very last one.
Okay.
Yes. So, yeah, second national council meeting, Dallas, April 15th, that is about a month from now. The link has been posted by the National Financial Secretary in the Zoom chat, but this is also on our website, two akisan.org. Among others, like I said, we'll formally present, Mr. Buddha, you'll be sworn in, you'll assume his duties, and then we continue with the business of the council meeting again. The flyer and the link to book your hotel rooms is in the Zoom chat. It's also on our website. Number two, our national convention, and that's part of the agenda for today, is coming up August 10th through August 13th, sunny San Diego. If you're not aware, as I said, today, the hotel is 100% booked. We are working to get more rooms so that we don't have to get an overflow hotel. For those of you who know San Diego is a very expensive city. So we're doing our best to make sure that we stay within the contracted rates on Dr. Kikor, the convention chair will chime in on more on that as we go along. And then number three, November is far away, but just to get our heads around it, November's first national council meeting will be in the city of Miami. By the time of convention, of course, Madame President Miami will have more to say on that. So now we'll go to my presentation. It'll be very brief. Again, all this information I'm sharing with you will be is or will be on our website eventually. So there are two articles that have been posted on there, did it frequently, almost every month on our website. The first is a 30, what I'm going to call at this point, a 30-month assessment with respect to the association in general, and the 30-month assessment with respect to vocational training also in general. Two main areas, you can go to the next slide. Two main areas that, among others, that this administration was going to stress on was getting external funding from individuals for profit and nonprofit organizations so that we do not have to wait till we get to conventions to raise money. We also introduced the concept of vocational training through donations that people make to the organization, and then in turn we use that to sponsor the students. I want to thank everybody, everybody from the bottom of our hearts for all the help that you have given to this association, especially financially. In many cases, and I will go through those at the appropriate time, members of various committees have actually contributed out of their own pockets to make sure that these programs came to fruition. We also came up with some things like working with various companies like airlines, hotels, car rentals, to offer discounts again, so that members can benefit. I'm still working on many more. Mr. Speaker, about that, the person out of iPhone, I guess, chat them privately in the waiting room to change your name so they can be admitted. Thank you. And again, the link is in this presentation. I'll have it pasted in the Zoom chat eventually. Next screen, please. All right. So this is just a summary. Again, everything is on the website, but just give highlights with respect to money. We were able to raise last year about $20,000 before the actual convention. And that came, for example, from State Farm. Thanks to Dr. One, I want to talk to Mauleko. We also had the partnership with TapTap Send, which is an app that does the same thing that Sendwave does, which is send money both in dollars and in Naira to Nigeria. So we're able to raise about $20,000 for that, and we're hoping to not only meet, but go beyond that before the upcoming convention in August. I'm going to give you one second. There are a few people that are seeking admission. Please admit them to the Zoom call. All right. We were able to raise about $2,500 for the scholarship program last year. And $1,900 of that came from members of the education committee. And I want to thank them very much for that. Last year, we were able to give scholarships in Nigeria to about 12 individuals. We're going to expand on that on their appropriate time in the agenda. The Chair of the Education Committee will expound on that. And then in the US, we were able to give to three students. $500 is 1,500. Now, with respect to Nigeria, in addition to the money that was raised, there was an individual in the organization who also donated extra amounts of money to those students. So they were able to get more than the, in some cases, more than the 100,000 that the association gave to the students. So I want to thank that individual personally. We were also able to raise, again, I mentioned, the vocational training program process. So if you have someone you want to sponsor, you donate the money to the association, and then, of course, we send that money in bulk to the trainer. One of the advantages is that you are able to get discounts through the trainer. Of course, any money you donate is tax deductible. So in total, this goes back to 2021. We've been able to raise about $20,000 that way. That is money that did not have to come out directly from the pocket of the association. Let me see, there are two people in the waiting room. If you don't mind checking them, please.
Yeah, Mr. President, those two do not have their names. I've messaged them, so we're waiting for them to clarify. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And then for the Mr. and Ms. Akisun, last year, from donations between the council and also members of Akisun Atlanta, where they hail from, we're able to raise at least $10,000 for those projects. Last, the medical mission that was concluded last October, we're able to raise about $3,000 from various individuals. And then with respect to welfare, so that's been between buying flowers for those family members who lost family members or the fist caps or anything that we have sold on behalf of the organization, we're able to raise about $11,000. So again, thank you very much for all these donations. And without this, of course, we'd have to tax the association by extension ourselves even more. So thank you very much. We're hoping that, of course, between now and the next, well, next year, next convention, we're able to even exceed these numbers. And more importantly, whoever is going to take over after this administration continues in that tradition so that hopefully we get to a point where by the time convention comes, we're just there to have fun, not worrying about how much money we need to raise because we've already raised all that money. Next slide, please. Very good. So we also established a life insurance program. It's not under the association per se, but we're using members of the association who are life insurance agents to get that going. Dr. One, I want to talk to Akisun Charlotte Metro is one of them. Miss Timoy Song of Akisun Tampa is one of them. And then I think there's a third person, I can't remember her name, but she's, if you go to the website, search for life insurance, they're on there. So the point of this being that you don't have to go with one person, you can pick from the three, do your research, whatever works for you best, you know, you do it. As many of you know, usually when we use loved ones, we tend to set up these committee of friends WhatsApp groups. Nothing wrong with that, but if we were to proactively set up these life insurance policies for ourselves, maybe the need for these would reduce over time. Speaking for myself, I mean, probably at the very moment, I'm probably part of like five, six of such groups. Again, I don't mind, but I'm just saying that if we were to have these life insurance policies, maybe there wouldn't be that many. So I strongly encourage you to visit the website. If you don't have life insurance already, and you want to supplement what you now already have, contact any of those three individuals and sign up for something. If you didn't do it for yourself, do it for your loved ones. And we've also entered various partnerships, like I mentioned earlier, like TapTap Send to enable us to send money, the association gets a percentage based on that. I think today we've probably made about $400 to $600 based on the percentage that we get back. We have organizations where if you order your prescriptions, if it's cheaper than what your insurance offers, if you don't have insurance at all, again, all those are on the website. Click it. Take advantage of it. The association gets money from that as a result. There's also an app there, again, on the website, that if you subscribe to it, you can stay here in America and pay for prescription medication for your family members in Nigeria from over 6,000 nationally-approved pharmacies in Nigeria. Again, for each of those transactions, Akisun gets a percentage. And these are ways, again, trying to figure out how we can raise money outside of the convention so that we don't have to tax ourselves 100% all the time.
Mr. President, sorry to interrupt. We need to identify iPhone. There was somebody who iPhone.
You, did you let them in or in the waiting room?
This iPhone is in already.
But if you did not come with your full name, we're just trying to prevent Zoom bombing, okay? So please identify yourself or you're going to have to be taken off. It's for our safety. So iPhone, and is there another one?
Mr. President, I'm not asking you. I'll go use that's my iPhone or y'all eat my name up here.
No, you're okay. You're okay.
Okay.
Somebody has shown iPhone.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we'll remove the individual. Thank you.
Maybe nine, another few seconds, then I'll do that. That's fine. All right, while that is happening, I'll go to the third bullet point. So at the onset of my administration, I've always thought about Akwabomites and the diaspora, not as people in individual countries, so over, let's say, 200 countries. There were diasporans in general. So I set about looking for national presidents of various Akwabom communities in different countries. And then we formed this group that we call the Forum of Akwabom Presidents Worldwide. Right now, there are 12 presidents in that group. Anywhere from Canada all the way to Malaysia, there's people, Israel, India, who would have thought we had Akwabom communities, and we do. And we meet monthly. And so the whole purpose of that group was to enable us to speak with one voice, be a voice for the voiceless, and if any of us need help, as in, you know, legitimate help, we do what we can to offer, and then eventually maybe have a global project as opposed to like each country posting their individual projects. So sometime last year, maybe it was a year before, if you remember, there were some IDPs internally displaced persons of Akwabom origin in Katzina who were under great persecution. So they reached out to us, we did our investigation, made sure it was legit. We put it out there, solicited for donations. And even the Akwabom state government, having seen that video, they helped in bringing those individuals back. We also raised some money, about $5,000 for that effort, give them to those individuals through Akisun Atlanta member who was in Nigeria at the time. And then finally, again, there's many more. Go to the website, that will be published in the Zoom chat to see everything, but as of last convention, we commissioned a flag and an anthem for the organization. They will be played at our various new events, council meetings and conventions. If you go to YouTube, you can check out the anthem and see the flag that is on there. The flag will be officially unveiled at the upcoming convention in San Diego. So please watch out for that. Next slide, please. All right. So with respect to vocational training programs, I'm just going to brush over these again, and that link at the bottom of the presentation, which will be pasted in the chat room, you can see everything. But we started off in May of 2021. Since then, we've had four batches of IT and cosmetology. Those two will actually be wrapping up between March and I think May of this year, and then batch five will resume. And then we also had one batch each in culinary arts and agro-business. We're looking for those poor responses in those two, so we're looking for other areas, maybe fashion design. If you have any ideas, by the way, please let us know. One of the lessons learned from that was that, Mr. Member, I admit the two people who are on there, they have their names on there. We're trying to see if we can branch out to at least each of the senatorial districts because in putting everything in Rio, not everyone is able to come from, let's say, I'm just saying, Arrochugo, for example, all the way to here to come and learn. So if you happen to know of people in each of the senatorial districts qualified, we will vet them, put them on the Zoom call like we normally do, for you to ask them questions. Let us know so that those who are in those areas who may not be have that money, especially now with Naira scarcity, they can learn in their areas as opposed to coming, you know, traveling to and from Rio all the time. I think to date, we've, I'm going to say about maybe 100 students from 2021 till now have gone through our various programs. And then another thing that I did, which I think we've not done in the past, I stand corrected, is we followed up with as many of the students as possible. So we reached out to each of them, and for those who responded, you know, we're able to chronicle their progress. So again, if you go to that link, and in that presentation will be in the Zoom chat, you will see, you know, like how many women, how many men, where they are now, what the people are doing. All that is on the website for you to see. And if you don't mind, bookmark those two pages because they're updated at least every month. And that is so that everybody is able to tell what we're doing. You know, you, everyone is busy, you may not be able to get that information from the chapter president, but again, it's on the website. So, well, that's all I had with respect to remarks today. Thank you very much. Before we go into the next agenda item, if there are any questions, please let me know at this time. If there are no questions, again, I think all of you have my phone number. Feel free to call me at any time with any questions you have, or send an email, president@akisan.org, and I'll be glad to answer them. So thank you very much.
Mr. President, sorry, Moi Song.
Yes, sir.
Is the copy of the slide going to be available for us?
Yes, I'll put it on the website right after this presentation. If it's possible to attach to the Zoom chat by Mr. Speaker, do so, if you don't mind. Yeah, it'll be on the website.
Thank you. Thank you.
And for those who don't know how to get to it, if you go to akisan.org under, I believe, about us, you see portfolios and committees. On that page, you have the presentations from all the virtual town halls going back to 2020. And this one will be part of that too. Thank you. All right. Mr. Convention Chair, Engineer Kiko, we go to 2023 Convention Updates.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, and greetings, good morning, everybody. I think it's still morning everywhere. For those who don't know me, Engineer Kiko, I'm the speaker for the Akisun Council of Chapter Presidents. I'm also the chapter president for San Diego. But today, I'm really honored as I'm serving as your convention planning committee chair for the upcoming Akisun convention. Apologize on the video, we're out west and it's still bright and early, so. But we're really excited for the upcoming convention. You know, this is going to be the 36th annual convention. When we reflect on, you know, what convention number one was way back when, I'm sure it was revolutionary, I'm sure it was absolutely amazing. The 36th convention will be no different. So we're really excited and preparing to host the entire Akisun community in sunny San Diego, California. Before I start, I do want to thank the convention planning team. We have a world-class team of experts, a lot of experience in convention hosting, so I wanted to really first acknowledge the team. I already introduced myself as the convention chair. The Akisun National Vice President, Madame Wemyang, is the co-chair. She's on the road right now, will be joining us a little later. I'm Don is our secretary and also helping with planning as well. Our national president, Avoni Turokwanekwad, and his entire national executive team are all part of the convention planning team. I don't see the board chair on the line, but Engineer Bobby Noffia, the Akisun Board of Trustees Chair and the entire board of trustee members are also part of the team. I want to acknowledge Engineer Michael Littum out of Philly. He's the lead for security, bring a wealth of, I'm sorry, registration, brings a wealth of knowledge, experience from a lot of different conventions to help really manage the registration, part of the production. Horrible Lake Caribou Mall out of Chesapeake Bay, Maryland. President, he's running all of security for the convention. Dr. Zitawan James is head of the Beauty Passion out of LA, part of the board, treasurer and LA Community Chapter. Abong Wenyewo is the protocol lead to help engage with everything related to protocol. She's out of Dallas, I'm sorry, Atlanta. Madame Confident Beyon, she manages the program booklet. I'm sure you'll be seeing a lot of things coming out from her on program booklets. She's out of Dallas. Itong Wuraki San Horables, Mike Asukor, and Engineer Asiana, who are both leading the entertainment and the DJ piece of the convention out of Atlanta. Dr. Montekem is in front of catering and food to make sure that as our people converge in the sunny San Diego, they're well-fed throughout the convention. Dr. Ido Gog is responsible for all the, you know, ping pong, golf, soccer, all the recreational activities in the convention. He's out of Atlanta. Dr. Kaita Roberts, deputy speaker of the chapter of council, chapter presidents, as well as Miami president. It's also on the committee to help ensure that chapter presidents and ultimately members are aware of everything going on in the convention planning. We also have the hottest working mind in Akisun, Dr. Wemy Quan, who was the immediate past convention was in Charlotte to make sure we capture lessons learned, best practices, issues and concerns from the immediate past convention in Charlotte and make sure we rectify that in San Diego. And last but not least, we have Mr. Basio Gog, the new Akisun National Financial Secretary, who is also part of the team out of Dallas. Again, bringing, he's new to the team, but bringing a whole different perspective and insight to that convention planning team. So I wanted to acknowledge the team, but I also want to acknowledge the, you know, the local team. So San Diego team members are also really supporting the day-to-day to make sure that when we get to San Diego, it's a spectacular convention. So again, like I said, it's a 36th annual convention. The theme for this year's convention is connect, inspire, transform. Establishing limitless potential in the next generation to excel beyond the boundaries in science, technology, engineering, art and math, STEAM. So we want to focus on everything else, but also really help drive the STEM initiative for our next generation, our kids, our families in the era of STEM. A lot of things here, a little bit of fact sheet, so it is in the Hilton Bayfront Hotel, like the national president talked about, it's already sold out and really selling out in March ahead of a convention in August. It's absolutely spectacular. The dates, as you know, it's August 10th through the 13th. We were able to lock in a room rate at 215. Some folks believe that rate was a little high. But this year, we were really configuring the convention to be a family vacation style convention. So when you look at the San Diego market, it was actually really a deal to be able to house the convention in a vacation resort-type facility. And as you've recognized, it's also sold out. There will be internet, free internet access for all members, we'll have breakfast. Talked about the group rate, even though the hotel is sold out, we still have a June 16 cutoff. We're still working with the hotel to add more rooms. The airport is just three miles away from the facility. It's a really short Uber or Lyft ride to the facility. It is right by downtown, so for those interested in downtown activities, nightlife, etc., really a few minutes walk across a bridge into downtown. And then there's also, you know, some discounting things for different facilities. I'll talk about a little later. I also want to really take time to really thank Akisun community, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you. The support for the convention thus far, as we're preparing to host it in San Diego has been absolutely amazing. Like the president noted, the hotel rooms sold out. We went back for more rooms, it sold out. And at this point, we're still working to see if we can get more rooms. So the excitement, the energy for this convention is really unbelievable. So thank you so much to the chapter president, the escrow, the board members and general membership for the onward rate support for the convention. We're looking forward to hosting everybody at the convention. So thank you for that. A little bit about the facility itself, it's a Hilton Bayfront, it's right on the water. You have a significant amount of rooms with very spectacular water views. This link right here, when we share the slides, you can click on it, it'll take you to the Akisun USA dedicated Hilton page. Don't, you know, you recommend to use the link. Uh, when you get into the, the uh link, it comes up with uh the dates to select the rooms, as you can see here. Uh, but like I said, rooms are sold out and we're still working to make sure we could add some more, since we continue to get more, uh, more interest. I just want to share just a few pictures, um, you know. We've had, we've been out there with the hotel, uh, thanks, Mr. President was out here last month to personally take a tour of the facility. Uh, and when I enter it, hottest walking man again, uh, from immediate past convention to come in and really look at some of the details. Uh, you can see, I mean, it's a nice open field here for folks to go hang out, enjoy the view. Uh, the rooms, like I said, you know, almost seventy percent of the rooms we have have nice waterfront facilities, uh refrigerators in, in all the rooms, uh, you can see the men foyer here to our convention space. Um, that's where we'll have all the exhibits uh laid out, uh, when you come in to get into the main ballroom, you can see a picture of the ballroom, you can see some of the meeting spaces as well. Um, you have, you know, a, a really resort vacation-style swimming pool. Uh, there's a bar, uh, and then just, like I said, it's really right downtown, uh, right downtown San Diego as well. Uh, you can see the floor layout, what I was gonna do is uh, let's see if I could do this real time, do a quick uh share of the uh a virtual tour of the facility, so give me a second right here. Make sure I got that. So this is, this is just the virtual tour of the facility. Hope, hope you can see it, I'm gonna play it for just a little bit, uh, it's a three D rendering model, uh, our space is called the Sapphire foyer space. Um, again, it's on the fourth floor, we have that uh facility, this is you coming up, up the escalator. Uh, you can see the foyer, this is where you have a lot of exhibits, to the left is your uh, uh, the, the ballroom, the main ballroom. Um, we'll have uh security areas, we'll have registration areas, uh, as you come in, you can see the take the right on this, a lot of our meeting spaces. So this, this uh three D rendering of the facility is in the packet um for uh for folks to really take a look at, um, but I wanted to show that. As you can see, uh, rendering here of the hotel. Okay, yeah, this is the main foyer, I'm saying, some of the rooms, some of the meeting spaces. Always. Okay. So just want to show that for, for folks to see, so we'll, we'll, um, like I said, we'll make those links available, you could really uh really visit the hotel virtually before you actually get, get to the, the facility, so. Uh, next thing I wanted to share with, with the the community is a lot of things to do, so we're asking folks, if you could make it out. Uh, the hotel is set up such that you have three days before the convention and three days after the convention. And so for those who want to really have that family vacation with, with uh a family, there's a lot of things to do while out in San Diego, Legoland, for those who have a real, real young ones, it's kind of a theme park. Um, with uh really spectacular, made out of Legos, a lot of rides out there as well. For folks who want to do a, a boat cruise, there's affordable boat cruise right by the hotel on the harbor, you could take uh out there. Uh, there's a lot of amazing beaches, uh, San Diego has different themed beaches, so uh La Jolla Beach, uh, a lot of real nice landmarks, uh, Pacific Beach, Mission Beach. Uh, we're close to Coronado Island, so that's the one that's just across the bridge. Um, you can see the famous San Diego skyline. Uh, our neighbor sister chapter LA Disneyland is just an hour thirty minutes from the facility, for those who want to venture out to LA to Disneyland. Uh, I know, uh, Dr. Idea Bo has been engaging with our local golf planning, you can see a, a golfing right on the waterfront in Coronado Island. Uh, Sea World is another uh really great attraction here in San Diego, we've been partnering with the San Diego Authority tourism authority on discounts uh for, for folks who are interested in uh checking out some of those attractions in San Diego, so please let me know if you're interested, we'll make sure that uh we get you connected. Uh, the other thing we're really pushing is registration, as you noticed, like I said, the rooms are sold out, uh, but we're encouraging folks to register. Um, Engineer Michael Littum is our registration uh lead, um, so one of the things we're asking is you can register through your local chapter presidents, um, they will register and then make sure that when you get to the convention, everything is ready for you, your wristband, your convention packet, you don't have to wait in lines. Um, but those who desire, you could also head to the website, you can see the link right here to uh, to register. Um, there is a discount, if you register between now and April thirtieth, uh, eighty dollars, the eighty dollars is discounted, you know, we recognize the slightly higher than normal room rate. So, uh, in partnership with the escrow, the national president, uh, and the board, so we were able to um discount the uh registration at eighty dollars. So, but you need to take advantage of that, you need to do that registration before April thirtieth. As an added incentive, um, the first hundred people to register, you get entered into a drawing to win uh boat cruise for two to really enjoy uh the San Diego Harbor, uh, it, it could get really spectacular in, in the daytime or at nighttime. So that's an added incentive for uh, uh, folks to go off and, and register for that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to point out, um, so we have not had a convention in the West in California in over twenty years. So this is, is slightly different, um, so we're encouraging folks to book your flight ticket early. Um, unlike the past, if you, if you wait till last minute, those tickets are gonna be uh pretty expensive. Uh, so one way to um really manage that is to book your flights early, get that locked in, uh, so you can still take advantage of the uh, you know, lower fare, because as you wait to, to the convention, it's almost guaranteed those prices are going pretty high, again, especially for our Akisane family out in the east. Um, that, that'll be something that you want to prioritize. Uh, thanks to Mr. President, we do have discounts from United and Delta, you can see they're ten percent off for, for those, up to ten percent off. Um, so you click on this, these are links, and within the packet, you can click on that, and it'll take you to how to take advantage of the uh of the discount, but I really want to encourage folks, especially in the east, to make sure that you uh book those flight tickets a lot earlier to take advantage of the discount. Uh, we're really excited about the cultural night and fundraising night, you know, we're still working through all the planning, but we have confirmed, um Anita Dennis will be back with us, uh, very exciting, energetic performance, uh, with Anita, she's confirmed. Also, for the first time ever, Mel to the Voe, uh, Quiber Mike, uh, we're planning a live band performance at the convention, so that has never happened before, it's really a, a live band, live instrument, live singer's uh performance as well at cultural nights, we're looking forward to that, uh, with Mel to the Voe. And then, uh, Tegai Quayom as well, so, so we're looking forward to, to some performance, we're still working to add more performance and entertainment, uh, as we work through the convention. The one thing I wanted to really footstomp is and we really need help from the entire community is starting on time. Uh, so how do we all challenge each other? And um, you know, a whole lot of accountable to start on time, I know it's always been a challenge, but uh we have a lot of events planned. And um, we want to make sure we could get started on time, so we could take advantage of all those as well, so. I mean, just even uh Mel to the Voe's performance, setting up the stage and getting ready to go on there, so, so please, um we're taking inputs or insights on how we can make sure we start on time. Another first is what we're calling the uh Akisane Technology and Innovation Summit. Uh, this is one, again, I can't thank Akisane community enough, we put out a call to say, hey, Akisane is looking for innovation and technology experts and leaders to engage in the first ever technology summit. Uh, Akisane community, what we got back, which is an unbelievable uh response in support, in volunteering, in helping. You know, uh, and Omar, co-founder of Global Air Media, Akisane former youth person, Udema Swama, Executive Director, you know, Dr. Sikarakbakan, Digital Strategist. Uh, National Techum, uh, just a, an expert within the growing dynamic era of digital currency and cryptocurrency. Anita Andy, Howard University, uh, technology professor. Uh, Helen, it was just a great story, she reached out, said, hey, I'm a new uh software engineer, I want to help my community, how can I help? I want to be on the panel. She reached out, I want to volunteer, it's just absolutely amazing. Uh, we even have uh Anita Udogbo out of Nigeria who supports Google, um Jackson Ababan in the bringing the financial and compliance side. Uh, Aisha, uh, uh, data analytics and co-founder CEO of Uncommon Measure. Uh, Wemo Bong, he was actually in Japan on business, reached out, wants to engage, so uh, we're really excited about this technology innovation summit, it's gonna be uh, it's a first ever, so please share the word with your team, your members, your community, uh, to come out and listen on a technology panel to really engage industry. We're thinking this is more, you know, kind of a career development, mentoring, giving back to the community uh in the area of technology, so. Exciting, exciting area. Um, also first, I'm sure you've been seeing these, um, we've been releasing short video clips highlighting different areas within San Diego, highlighting the convention. Um, if you haven't seen those, they're on our YouTube, Akisane YouTube uh channels, Instagram channels and Facebook, um, little clips, and uh, this is another one, we're getting ideas on, on how to continue to promote the convention. So, um, please, if you haven't seen those videos, uh, reach out, check out in uh Akisane in uh challenge. One of the members asked, uh, say, hey, how do we drive up, um excuse me, one second. Sorry about that, apologize, um, so yeah, they were saying, hey, we need to drive membership uh followers on a Akisane social media platform, because that's another way we could really raise uh, uh, funds and sponsors, so, so please, uh, if you haven't seen this, go, go like them, go follow them and on uh, on a different social media platform for Akisane. Uh, this is just a view of where we're gonna host the welcome reception, again, something different, it's gonna be out on, on the patio, you could use the patio, but it's also a a traditional um floor. Uh, ballroom inside the building, so will be an easy flow between coming out outside the patio and going inside as well for the social welcome reception. Uh, catering, we'll be working a lot of catering, you know, thank you, Dr. Montekum was leading that catering part, so just showing, we're, we're trying to make sure we got people are well-fed while they're out here, so. We've engaged a lot of different vendors, I think we're down selecting to uh three vendors. As you know, we'll have a traditional meal on Friday and the hotel would cater for us on, on Saturday. Um, another thing that we're doing that's really different, um, I'm sure that your chapter president flowed this down to you, is what we're calling sponsorship. Uh, so we're soliciting sponsorship opportunities across different areas. Um, you can see some of the gold, silver and platinum sponsors, again, a nice first ever within uh the convention, um, you could also sponsor different uh production items. Uh, you know, professional development summit, you see that, you could do a soccer tournament. Uh, so, uh, we got a great, great uh engagement, uh, individual call and said, hey, I want to send this to my company, and so they wanted some clarity on, on the sponsorship packet, and they send it to their company, uh, this is out in uh Michigan. Uh, so thank you, Dorian Ekbeong, uh, mission chapter president, but we, we got uh an individual that, um, the chapter president shared this with them, and they're reaching out to Akisane to see how they can help and how the uh, the company could sponsor, so fingers crossed that we close on that sponsorship. But, um, again, we just have a lot of different sponsorship opportunities for uh, for, to support the convention. Other ways to support, uh, purchasing tables and ads, um, you can see the different price structure there for different groups to dance in, um, this is how you could support, or buying a table for your chapter, or taking out ads in the program booklet, so just a different way to, to support. Uh, we do have a lot of different events planned as well, again, this is all still in the planning phase, the, the uh convention planning committee is hard at work to make sure that we bring all these uh events to you. Uh, so just listed a few items there. And uh, with that, I want to again, like I started, thank the Akisane community for the support to San Diego. Um, you know, this is shaping up to be a very spectacular convention. I plead and ask that, uh, you know, we all support San Diego to, to host, uh, what is shaping up to be a really nice convention. And I close with this quote. Please support the twenty twenty-three Akisane San Diego Convention. Let this convention be successful because of you, not despite of you. Thank you. Mr. President, back over to you.
Right, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Convention Chair, and thanks to also members of Akisane San Diego for and of course, members of the convention planning committee for everything you guys are doing to make sure this convention is a success. As I always like to say, when I work with people, I always challenge them within the context of the organization to go above and beyond what was done previously, and I must say that, uh, from those weekly videos, which I'm sure is why we're able to get the hotel sold out to things like the first ever tech summit, you guys have done it. And so, again, when it comes to next year's convention, I'll challenge those people to go above and beyond. Usually people are at a time, including myself, I would always say, what's the point of going to conventions, it's just the same old stuff. Right, but with each of these innovations, hopefully we're, you know, members in particular appreciating these things, because now when you go to convention, you don't know what to expect, as opposed to expecting the same old stuff. So, uh, this time I would like to um, open it up for a question or two, either in the chat room or verbally. I see, I think two people have their hands up, uh, Miss Diana Fia and Miss Iman Walakban. Then we throw it to the general public, and then we move to the next slide, so Madame Diana Fia.
Thank you, Mr. National President, our digital president. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Good morning, everyone, God bless you, it's so nice to see all the names and a few familiar faces, we are not showing our faces, but that's okay. Um, Dr. Bong, I always appreciate you, awesome. Folks, this is what we get when you have the young and the restless, our digital leaders. I love the show, awesome. Uh, straight to the point, uh, Dr. Kiko, uh, for us, your neighbor, we will not be flying, we are just two hours away, we will be in San Diego in groups and ready to support San Diego. Um, my question is, since we will be driving, I know, I'm very aware of how difficult parking is in San Diego. Um, I would like you to address that, um, maybe let us know a particular location that we can um park our cars. Um, yeah, so the area of parking. And I commend you for such a wonderful, um, detailed show. Um, getting us ready for San Diego, I know it will be wonderful, so please address the parking when you have the moment, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, uh, Madame Diana Fia, and thank you even more broadly to the uh LA Community Chapter, uh, the support has been, again, really awesome. Uh, yes, you're right, uh, one of the challenges with having the convention downtown is uh is, is a, is parking, so. Uh, the hotel has given us a discount, they do have a parking structure right next to the facility. Uh, so they've given us a discount uh on the parking, which is thirty dollars um, for the parking per day, uh, but we need to take that into advisement and see if we can work up a strategy where um, maybe we park outside downtown and then maybe carpool, so it's not, um um, so it's not as taxing, but yeah, there is, they did give us a discount on their parking to use their facility downtown, which is right next to the, right next to the hotel.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, as, as we get close to, are you saying it's right, the, the hotel itself will have parking?
But yeah, there's a parking right, a parking structure right next to the hotel that is discounted for Akisane.
Okay, awesome. So we will leave that posted so I can, we can share with our, um, members, please. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Manwala, and then Dr. Jerry, I see no more in that order.
Thank you, Mr. National President, and, uh. Thank you, the honorable, like, Chair of Chairs, President of President, uh. For spectacular show. I believe this is gonna be a convention that is second to none, unless you prove me wrong. Um, my, uh, little take is, I've seen you put a slideshow of, uh, different events that will be happening. Uh, during the convention. And I was watching out to see, uh, they say. Event that normally goes on Thursday nights. I don't know whether you, um, you missed the slide or, I don't know. The, uh, even pride award that showcases people that gives back to the community and also promotes. Uh, different individuals that have been helping out both, uh, in and out of Akisane and, uh, recognizing them. Thereby encouraging others to join us in promoting Akisane's name by giving back. Awesome. I've not seen, uh, that event. I don't understand. They will need sponsorship, so I've not seen it. I've not seen it coming up. Uh, nah, I don't know. That's why when you were doing this slide. Okay, just seeing you showing BOT pride, even pride of what are other activities. There was another slide that you were showing with all that colored pictures and all that stuff. So that's why I was asking. All right.
Uh, thank you so much, Honorable Lady Manwala. Man, you, you're right. You know, um, if I had put. The colors, we would probably be all day. There's just a lot going on. So I, I kind of summarized it, but you are right. Evil pride of what is coming back to Thursday. It's gonna be on Thursday night, uh, right now. We're planning it to be from about six PM to about ten PM on Thursday. And then it will flow from there into the, uh, welcome reception. Uh, so. Uh, but yeah, we're absolutely planning, uh, for that event as well. So more, more details on that. As we engage with the board chair and, and members of the board of trustees and the, the national president, so.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Manwala. Uh, Dr. Siano Moore and Mrs. Comfort Equine next in that order.
Quite on his own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I want to thank the. The chairman and also thank, uh, our president. I've been listening all along. I heard you mentioning a lot of, uh, functions and a lot of items that will be done. That you haven't mentioned, how much is the hotel? Because when I talk to people in Nigeria. About our convention there, they were asking me about the, how much the hotel cost, how much, uh. They're gonna spend and, uh, the way that is very far away. That it would be either in Atlanta or Washington. So what I did to them was. We live in the, the south. We always go to all other places. And the people living in the far, far west, like Oregon, California, they come to south. So why can't we go to the, to where they live? So that solved the problem and that's, uh, that the hotel is what I, I personally interested about. Because, uh. I need to know. I am in and out of, uh, United States. You know, so I don't go to a website all the time. I would have done that when I was in Nigeria, but the light, I don't have light all the time. So it's, it's a, a big burden for me when I stay in Nigeria. I only communicate with people, you know, through a telephone. So please let us know how much it costs, uh, how much the hotel costs. So that I will at least make my plan because I'm gonna be coming with my family. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Jerry, for the, for the question and the concern. Uh, and you're absolutely right. Um, you know, like I said, we haven't had a convention in California in twenty years. It's out in the west. Uh, we are accounting for the fact that it is a little bit, uh, uh, deep into the US. Or even a Nigerian, uh, families. Uh, I did share that the room rate was two fifteen, so two hundred and fifteen dollars a night. Um, that, that rate, um, for San Diego location, which is a tourist. Destination, a vacation destination is actually pretty good. Um, although it's slightly higher than, um, prior. Uh, convention. So one of the things we're doing is, like I said, we discounted the, um, the registration to account for that. Uh, but despite that rate, we, we had, like I said, we're seeing a, a significant amount of interest. Uh, with the room being sold out. So it is two hundred and fifteen, a, a night for, for the room. Um, but I agree with the point you just made. Um, we need all the support we can get from the community. Um, we hadn't been out in the west in California in twenty years. Uh, so, so we're looking forward to hosting. You know, our community in San Diego. So it's a, it's a vacation town, it's a touristy town. So I like the fact you're coming with the family. Uh, just make some time either before or after to make sure you enjoy those, uh, those items. So thanks.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir. Uh, we'll take the next four and then in the interest of time, we'll move on. But again, if you have any other questions, put them in the chat room as some people have, or call me directly or call Dr. Kiko. So the next four people and then we'll move on. Mrs. Comfort Equine, Mr. Samuel, I see, and Madame Yaridem and Miss Delemandi in that order. So. This is a mail.
Yes, sir. Good morning to everybody. Greetings from Dallas, Texas. Um, my name is Komfori Peiyong, the liaison officer, BOT national. Um, so I want to appreciate everything that the national team. And the, uh, convention planning chair is doing or they are doing to make sure. We have a wonderful, um, outing in August. So I have, um, I had three concerns, but I think, uh, my BOT, um. Secretary, Assistant Secretary has already, uh, mentioned one, which was, uh, the even pride award. I'm grateful that is coming back on Thursday, so we will have enough time to raise fund for the organization. Second one is, uh, act. Um, I wanted to use this medium to appeal to the, um. Chapter presidents. I hope a whole lot of them are represented, are represented here in the roadshow. Uh, you know, we cannot have a wonderful, um. Convention as is being planned without having a big booklet. I've always said, um, the national convention is not a, a local chapter convention. So, um, as you all are planning to come to San Diego. I hope and I am appealing that you are also reaching out. You know, to the community where you are, that like the local chapter. To get, uh, people to, uh, put their ad in the, uh, convention booklet to make it wonderful. Um, and the third one, um, is, um. I want to appeal to all of you to come to Dallas. Uh, Mr. Convention Planning Chair has already said it's been twenty years. Since, you know, anything came that way. So we feel that, that, that way also for Dallas. I want to appeal to, to, uh, the council members, the BOTs. And whoever is on the audience that can come to Dallas, we are ready to host you. And also we want our program booklet to look nice, Mr. or Dr. Kiko. Please send your ad advertising you are. What you are trying to do there in San Diego to appear in Dallas, uh, booklet and everybody in the team, please, please. Come to Dallas and you will be highly, highly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much, uh, Mrs. Equine, for those who are wondering what he says Dallas is referring to the second national council meeting, April fifteenth. Uh, the flyer.
Yes, sir. That's what I, I, that, yes, for the council meeting. Yes, sir.
So that information has been posted in the chat room. It's also on our website. If you can't find it, it's in, there's a search bar on the top right. Just enter second national council meeting Dallas, you'll get that information. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say real quick, thank you, Manwala, and, uh, I agree a hundred percent on your. The plot for the ads and also, uh, you know, supporting Dallas, which is a council meeting before the convention. So. Most definitely, we will put an ad in the, uh, Dallas, uh, program. So thank you. We could, you could hold us to that. Thanks.
I'll reach out to everybody, sir. So, um, I've been really, really busy, but I'll get on with it. To do both for Dallas and the national. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Kiko, while we, um, admit Mr. Samuel, please ask the iPhone person to identify themselves.
Yeah, I did send a note in the.
Okay, good.
Wait room. So, uh, until they do that, we won't admit it.
Very cool. Mr. Samuel, I see in New York, Madame Yaridem, and let me say the man in that order, then we'll move to the next item.
Is, is that my turn, sir?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, sir. Uh, yes, uh, this is Samuel Ascien from New York. Uh, Mr. President and, uh, the gentleman who's been speaking, I just want to commend you. On the, uh, excellent report that we've had, but I just want a comment on two things, sir. The business meeting and, uh, then the post-convention event, that's always been the biggie. Uh, I just want to know what have you done to follow up on the business meeting we had last year? Or business submit we had last year and the expectation that it was raised. And the assurances that the, the embarrassing situation we had, that we had to wait for over an hour. For the, uh, for the event to take, uh, take off. Uh, what plans have you done? And then the last question would be. Uh, year in, year out, we have this convention and we look for a summary of, say, communicate. Uh, what arrangement have you made to cover? Because you see what I want to say, why I'm so concerned. Is that people have high expectation of us. I must comment the president on the advances he's made, but people still feel. Despite all the actual has been for that we are underperforming. Uh, somebody had asked me recently said, when I wrote an article, he said, we expected diaspora to have said. A, I've acquired a land at home to have this diaspora that you could all display all your talents and we come short. So I hope you could just address the two, those two concerns. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll take this and I don't know, then maybe Mr. Fred and I could also have you, uh. Okay, uh, no, great points. Um, so one of the things we're doing is, um. We, we have, uh, honorable Dr. Um, Women Quan, who recently hosted the last convention to make sure that. Lessons learned, best practices, concerns from the prior convention are factored in to the, um. To the new, to the, the San Diego convention. Uh, we also look, uh, we always also look at lessons learned. So one of the things that we're doing in this convention is always looking at what were the challenges and issues. In prior convention to make sure that we don't repeat those same, uh, those same events. So. Uh, that's on the business summit concern. Mr. Brad, I'll let you take some of the other, uh, areas, especially with the land and, and billing thing. So.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So yes, we do have lessons learned after every convention. And I know one of those items was the communicate. We do apologize for letting that skip our memories. The last two conventions, then we will do it this convention and then moving forward. Uh, with respect to, I guess, benefits of the business summit, uh, separate from the business, when we're in the council meeting. Anytime I can speak for myself, I go home in September, even when I go home sometimes in May. I always try to follow up on many of those items and individuals who present stuff at those meetings. Um, out of, I think, four or five major items, I think we've been able to accomplish two. We're working on the others and I don't want to jinx it yet, but Lord willing, by the time this administration leaves, next August. We'll have a couple or a few more major announcements. But yes. Um, we hear you, uh, we're incorporating everything. We're learning as we go each time and, uh. Hopefully, you know, maybe we're not on the promised land yet, but we will be, uh, very soon. So thank you. Uh, Madame Yaridem, Akisane, LA, and then we said, I'm Andy, then we move to the next item.
Um, just a quick question for Mr. Kiko. Um, sorry to take you back. It's about parking. And the, um, the, 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 the parking, is it, is it self-parking or ballet?
Yeah, that, that, that number is self-parking. Um, it's a multi-story parking facility just attached to the hotel on the left. And so it is a self park.
Thank you.
All right, and last but, last but not least, Mr. Emandy, Akisane, Washington DC.
Um, um, good, uh, what is it? Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I hope everybody can hear me. Yeah, Mr. President, Mr., uh, Akiko. Um, my question is on, on the cost of attending the convention. Um, just looking at the room rate plus tax. Um, you get, now gets you to like two to hundred and seventy-fourty-seven dollars. And then, um, thirty-dollar parking for people that would drive and also or rent, uh, vehicles. You're looking at almost three hundred dollars, close to three hundred dollars a night. I know you've said, um, there's a discount of, what, twenty dollars on, uh, registration. That doesn't even pay for a night's parking. And it's just, that twenty dollars is for the entire weekend. It's not something we pay daily. So I'm, I'm asking, I'm also suggesting. Whether, um, Akisane can do a further discounting of the registration. Um, to maybe fifty dollars, sixty dollars, you know, to pushing the impact of the cost, because if you look at it, it's really expensive. You know, I, I think we, we, we need to look at further discounting on the registration. It still wouldn't, wouldn't be much, but at least it may have, you know, encourage people to plan to come with their families. Uh, that's, that's all I want to say.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, the question, Honorable Lady Man, the, uh, former Akisane Board Chair, once a board chair, always a board chair. Uh, hence the, the financial question. Uh, yeah, Holland, yeah, we did, we did factor in, um. What you described and just for everybody's benefit, one of the things we did early on. Um. Sorry about that, was, uh, you know, we, we surveyed a cross-section of Akisane folks. Uh, we surveyed, um. Members and chapter presidents and BOT and folks that, as we were looking at that two fifteen room rate. Um, if folks will still come to San Diego, uh, we received the almost eighty percent response rate. Um, that said, they wanted to come to San, San Diego, and that's why we continue to engage on this. I think the analysis on that eighty-dollar discount for registration and that still isn't happened, um, by April thirtieth. Is to ensure that Akisane still returns a convention that breaks even. Uh, so we did look at that, uh, you know, very detail. One of the things that we hope can augment that. Is the, you saw the sponsorship package, which is also new. So we have several sponsorship packages that we're really trying to engage to see if maybe we could help there, but the, the eighty dollars, um. I mean, that, that went to a lot of reviews and scrutiny to arrive at that discount. So. Um, so right now, I hope we could hopefully make it up on the other side with, with the sponsorship.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Kiko. Thank you for all the questions. Again, we hear your concerns with respect to, uh, the cost in particular. Uh, we can, you can rest assured that we did our very best to make sure, given the high cost of living in San Diego, that. We got as low prices as possible and we're still working on it. Our next convention planning meeting is the last Sunday of this month. We'll keep on talking and hopefully we'll be able to get even more concessions. If you have any other questions, contact your chapter president, who in turn will contact us, or you can reach out to us directly. Uh, thank you. Uh, we'll move to the next item, Akisane women. Uh, for those who are not aware, uh, I believe it was in the convention last year in Charlotte. Convention ratified the Akisane women. And also the leadership were sworn in at the San Francisco First National Council Meeting in November. So congratulations to the women. We look forward to working with you all and looking for great things to come from you. And on that note, I would like to introduce the, uh. Chair lady of the Akisane Women, Madame Diana Fia, out of Akisane LA community. She has a few words for us. So Madame President or Madame Chair, over to you.
Thank you, thank you, my digital.
Thank you, thank you, my digital national president, Ituro. Thank you to all of you that are on here. Thank you to the Chairperson, the Chairman of the Convention Committee. Mister President, I want to just really appreciate you for how positive you've taken this association in the right directions. We did not make a mistake when we voted you in the first time, and also when we gave you the opportunity to serve for the first time for a second term. I, I want to thank the women of Akisun. We have talented professionals, we have mothers, we have sisters, we have friends. And I appreciate, appreciate each and every single one of us. We come from myriad background, but I was chosen to, to lead, to be the Chairperson, the Chairwoman. And I don't take it lightly, I appreciate it, and I'm here to serve. I want to thank the previous leadership of Akisun Women. But so at a point, we decided to meet and create six regions. If you've been on the Women's WhatsApp Group, it was posted that we have six regions. It's the South Region, and Dr. Keitier Roberts out of Miami is the Regional Coordinator for the Southwest Region. Ms. Gloria Atten is the Regional Coordinator. She's also the Secretary in the Women's Group. We have Mid-Atlantic Region, and that's the Regional Coordinator is no other than Mrs. Nkoye Po Lady, Nkoye Po, she's also the Vice Chair Lady. We have the West Region, which I, Diana Afia is the Chair, the Regional Coordinator, and also the Chair Lady for Akisun Women. We have Midwest Region. Mrs. Ann Ekber is the Treasurer, she's the Coordinator for that region. The last region, the sixth region, we don't have a Regional Coordinator, because nobody, no woman from that region participated at that meeting. So, when we meet at our first meeting, we will figure out what to do with the sixth region. Having said all that, the women decided during our very first meeting to meet quarterly. So, the first meeting will be March twenty-fifth, and I encourage every single lady to participate, come in, join, bring your ideas. Believe me, your ideas are valuable and will be appreciated. So, come join us. I believe Kibara, when you make a pick of coming in. Who's here, who fuck, who do you want to know, who do you have to be back in one? So, what did they came? Was young, we had that theme that used to say, who, 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 bang, bow, down, say, can any join? So, I'm encouraging you women to please come and join us, bring your ideas to the table, let's talk about it, so that you won't feel left out when decisions are made. And so, when we meet, we have a few things. This will be our very first meeting, so we will have a lot to discuss, decide what projects we want to do, what we women would want to see at the convention during our summit. And I thank the convention team that we will, as usual, we will have the opportunity for the women to meet and brainstorm and enjoy each other. And we will also want to find, I'm glad you mentioned, Doctor Akiko, some of the side scenes of women. We will talk about that at our meeting on, on the twenty-fifth, to just figure out which of those options you've presented that we, as a group, can enjoy, can do together. And so, what else did I need to add on here? What is, I just want to encourage every chapter president to please encourage the women in your chapters to join, be a part of the Women's Forum. Because when you, you, there is strength in numbers. And so, I encourage you to please talk to your female members to join, participate, and bring their, their ideas. And what else do I need to say? Since we haven't really met yet officially as a group, this will be our first meeting. So, at the council meeting, which will be after our first meeting, we will have more to discuss and to present to everyone. So, I thank everyone, our, the mother of our president, Doctor Idara, we see you, always looking beautiful. We appreciate your support. And so, that's all I really wanted to say today, that I appreciate the opportunity to serve and will do my best. And see you all ladies, first at the council meeting in Dallas, and then at the convention, and also, most importantly, at our meeting, March twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much, Madame Chair, for that presentation. If you don't mind, put in the Zoom chat, and of course, we'll help you publicize elsewhere the details of the meeting on March twenty-fifth, so that as many people as possible can join. Are there any questions for Madame Chair on this time? Okay, Angie Number, Akiko, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mister President, and thank you, Madame Diana Afia, former Deputy Speaker of the Colonel of Chapter Presidents and former President of LA Community. Thanks for the update on the women. All I could ask to offer is, what help do you need as you plan that Women's Summit at the convention? So, whatever help you need, whatever you guys need to make sure you have a spectacular Women's Summit, please reach out, let me know. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. After our meeting, we will get back with you. Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
All right, if there are no other questions for the Chair of the Akisun Women, we will move on to the presentation by Miss, Miss and Mister Akisun USA. They are a very integral part of our association, especially as it relates to our youth. Last year, we were able to raise record sums that enabled the then Mister and Miss Akisun to do very good things in Aquabum State, and I live also here in the US, and we're looking for the same and better from the current set. So, Miss Akisun, are you on? Grace Rabo.
Aquabum is sun on.
Yeah.
Good morning, you guys. I think it's still morning. Thank you so much for having us. I'll be speaking on behalf of both I and Mister Aquabum today, as he's not able to be present with us. I would like to first and foremost thank everyone on this call for being here. We want to thank nationals, we want to thank our chapter presidents, we want to thank our parents, and especially, we want to thank the, the previous queens and kings that have come before us that have shed so much light on us during our tenure thus far. So, as you guys know, we will definitely be doing a community project at home and also here in the diaspora. In the diaspora, we're really targeting our youth. So, Mister Aquabum and I both made our, our duties to serve on the youth e-board. So, we both have roles on the Akisun Youth e-board, so we're, you know, making sure we have our hands and some of the things that's going on with our youth, so that we can try to empower our youth and have more of a voice with empowering our youth to the best of our ability. So, as I mentioned, our target audience is the youth. For the diaspora, our target audience is the youth because of the sake of, we need to make sure that our youth are more present. We want to make sure that they're coming to our local meetings and that they're prepared to, you know, take on the reins for Akisun. Because Akisun will not always have the same leaders, the same, you know, pioneers and all those type of things. Come twenty twenty-five, twenty fifty, we want to make sure Akisun is still a running and growing organization when it comes to that time. So, it's time to make sure our youth are prepared when doing so. And also, our audience, being the youth in the dias, and not in the diaspora, sorry, in Nigeria, is for the sake of, I mean, we need to just empower our youth. We'll go home and, you know, donate rice, rice and clothes and things of that sort. But that's a temporary fix. We want to do something that will actually impact them. It may not impact the masses, but if you start with one, one can come and generate into three, three can generate into ten, it can just continue to multiply. So, that's what we're hoping for our projects to do. If you could start the slide, please. Go down to the fourth slide, pretty please. Thank you. So, as Mister Aquabum, I have the great opportunity from being from the Arukanam Local Government. When I went home in September, that was my first time being able to go home as an adult. So, that was my first time just really seeing the area and seeing how remote the area is and how less of an opportunity people have coming from that area. So, I wanted to kind of target that area starting off. So, I wanted to promote trades amongst people or promote the opportunity to learn trades amongst people in my local government. The trade that I have been looking for to is tailoring, so fashion designing, I was able to partner with a well-esteemed tailor that's in Aquabum, that is willing to teach some of the, the three to four students that we're able to sponsor, that she'll be willing to train them for a six-month to one-year period of time. And during the completion of their training, I would have them make, you know, clothes for I and Mister Aquabum, and we would sport it and post it on social media, because a lot of women here, or men and women here, typically get their clothes sewn back home. Me being one of them. Most of my tailors here, they're okay, but the ones back home are elite, just in my opinion. So, I would like to be able to promote them and promote their works on our bodies, of course, and put their contact information, put, you know, their location, put whatever other piece of information they may have, so that people here in the US will, you know, go and see, oh, that's a nice dress that you wore. And they would be wanting to book their works, and I could be that middle, that middle person to help them out with that. So, that's our goal for the tailoring. And I have the breakdown of the tailoring costs. The lady is in Uyo, but she'll be traveling, traveling back and forth, and at times, some of the students will be going to her shop. And so, we're working on the schedule for her to go, or for them to meet at least three to four times a week. So, that, that, that's factoring into the cost. But as you guys do know, with the state of where Nigeria is right now, inflation is very serious. So, these prices haven't been adjusted thus far, but I would say, while looking at these prices, please consider the rate of inflation that is going on. So, though the tailoring tuition and transportation might be, you know, a million two hundred naira, want, make sure that, you know, that this is including three to four students. Though that's not per student, that's for the totality of at least four students. Same thing with the sewing machines, making sure they all have sewing machines to practice on, as well as the supplies, the supplies that'll be needed are listed below. We also wanted to at least sponsor one person to go to the IT, take the IT route. When I was in Nigeria, I was able to go with Ituro to the site that, or yeah, to the site that he's been working with, Al Inuyo, and I was able to listen to the students, to listen to their testimonies on how they've been working in IT and how IT is taking them to a whole different level, not even just financially, or the possibilities of it financially, but how it's mentally strengthening them. Because when you start a program, it's not something that, you're kind of defeated because you don't know what you're doing, but they were so, they were so encouraged. Just by the second week, they're already learning so much. One student mentioned how she cried so many times during the first month, but the people around her, on top of the, the person that was teaching them, kept motivating her. So, it's not just a learning opportunity that'll get you somewhere financially, but it builds a person, it builds a person, it builds their character. So, I really love if you guys could support towards that. Next slide, please. For Mister Akisun, Mister Akisun is wanting to give back to the Lutheran Primary School, which is in his local government. He's wanting to supply about four to fifty wooden desks, so it's the seat and table combined, including boxes of chalk for whiteboards to make the educations more comfortable for the students. We've also been to schools out there, we know how the schools can be, it's very underdeveloped. So, please, we would also like if you guys could donate towards this. Again, the prices, excuse me. Excuse me, the prices on this have not been adjusted. So, again, I would say, please, please, please consider inflation and what is going on right now in Nigeria as you donate. We really do appreciate that. Next slide, please. So, I've touched on what we're doing in Nigeria. Here in the United States, we have made a plan of things to do, and some of those have either been completed or are in the works. So, hosting our youth and young adults, end of the year party that was hosted by the Atlanta Chapter, hosted by the Atlanta Chapter Men, we were able to complete that. We had a nice turnout of youth and young adults to come out. It wasn't a huge turnout, but like I said, we're starting, we're starting from something. When you start in the beginning, it's not always going to be the grandest experience, but people have seen, other youth have seen, and now they're interested to see when our next event is. So, that was a great thing that we had going on. We've been doing our phrases of the week. I spoke to you guys last about it, you guys encouraged me to put it on YouTube. So, we will be updating, updating it to put it on YouTube. We're still posting videos bi-weekly. And I was actually given the great opportunity, I was introduced to a lady that is in Aquabum that is actually taking it to the next level for us, whereas she will be helping us teach our youth and young adults our language. A lot of us, we live in the home with our parents, but to really sit down and have your mom teach you, okay, what is one, what is two, what is three? Like, it doesn't really always happen. A lot of us aren't even at home with our parents anymore. So, this way, she'll be teaching us twice a week for one to two hours at a time, giving us lessons throughout the week, homework throughout the week. So, I was able to promote that on the Akisun Youth page, since I do have ties with, since I am on the e-board, I'm able to put my hand into the, or utilize their page, and they have a very big following. There's over almost a thousand, two thousand Akisun youth following that page. So, the message gets out to them. We were able to have at least ten people sign up thus far, and I would definitely encourage you, please, let your children know about this opportunity. The first class actually is starting right now, so I will be able to join the first class as I'm in this meeting. But still, she's already prepared lessons for me, virtual lessons, video lessons, audio lessons, and things of that sort, that she's given to us a week in advance, so we can be practicing it and working on it. Because we know our language is projected to be a dying language, and honestly, God forbid it will not be a dying language in Jesus's name. We pray that our youth can want and desire to learn this language, and I pray that you challenge your child as well to want to learn their mother tongue as well. We're here in America, but we are Nigerian, and most of all, we are from Aquabum. So, please, please, please encourage that with your children. If you want the, if you would like for them to go through the source that we have, contact me, and I will definitely send a contact to you. The lady charges about fifty dollars a month, but that's for eight to nine sessions, and she's always free and available for any type of, you know, questions or extra help. We also wanted to encourage to use interactions via group me, so that when we come to the conventions, it's not that we're just meeting and passing each other by. We want to be talking on group me, so that we can actually get to know each other, mingle amongst each other. Our, our children are not marrying each other, we're going out and marrying other tribes. So, we're trying to encourage all of us communicating on group me or on WhatsApp, and that's actually been successful thus far. We have been communicating on that. So, also, if you want the link for your child to be able to also communicate with us on group me or WhatsApp, if they're not already, please contact me, my information will be available. Also, encouraging local chapter involvement. We are in the process of trying to contact all of the chapter presidents. Some, some that I spoke to weren't yet. Um, some, some that I spoke to weren't yet, um, initiated somewhere, starting in January and things of that sort. So I've given them time to settle into their place, and, um. I've been, sorry, I was reading that message, I've given them time to settle into their duties and things, but we will be contacting them to try to see if we can find a way. Um, to get the youth more active in their local chapter, because it starts from a local chapter, we can be as, we can promote as much on a. A bigger span as a national, uh, youth group, but you still have to start with your local chapter. So yes, next slide, please. Um, so estimated budget, of the picture here is when I went to go, um, meet with the students at the. The, the tech. When I went to go meet the students at the, um, the tech building, um, but here we have the breakdown of the cost. Um, and like I said before, Nigeria is going through a lot right now, so, um, please make sure you donate. We have our hashtag at the, not the hashtag, we have our QR code at the bottom, so that you guys can, um, donate, um. What is that again, okay, yeah, we have our hashtag at the bottom, so you guys can donate. Um, look at the cost, review the cost, whatever you can, please, please, please donate, um. We would really, really appreciate that, we were planning to go home originally in April, but with how things are looking right now. We'll have to maybe push it back, so we're looking, hopefully around May, we're really just looking, but, um. If you can, we'd like to see if the end of April or beginning of May can still be sufficable, or not sometime during the summer. But definitely and preferably before the convention happens, so thank you, thank you, thank you so much, um, again, please. Encourage your children to come and learn this language, I know I've said it two, three times, I'll say it ten times, it's so, so, so important. We really want our youth to not be so departed, because we watch the other, um, tribes, and we're wondering what. What do they do, or what do they have that we don't have, we have everything and more, we just have to be more interactive, so again, encourage them. To join these group messages, to join these, um, to join the, the classes, because even the classes we're doing. She has fun things set up for us, so that we can interact with each other, and I think she'll be coming. Um, to the convention, or by God's grace, she'll be coming to the convention, if you guys would like to meet her in person, she's hoping to be present at our convention in August. So yes, thank you so much, um, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, Ms. Akisian, uh, but, uh, while she was presenting, I did put the link to donate to their project in the chat room. And those will also be shared out to the council members and everyone else after this call, it's also on the website. Uh, last year, the Miss Time is Akisian were able to do a talent show, I think they provided desks for the primaries. A couple of primary schools, and they did some other stuff, so all this was thanks to your donations, so, but again, uh. Digging a little deeper in the well, support them, so they can even go above and beyond. All these things we're doing, especially in a Quibum state, is doing a lot to promote our brand. Uh, and then before I open it up to any questions, with respect to the language, like I told on this Akisian. Uh, we would like a situation where, since it's a three month program, those who are learning. Move from the beginner stage, which is probably the alphabets and all that, to being able to say. Complex sentences by the time we go to convention, and we can even showcase them at the conventions. But, and once again, support them, the link again is in the chat room, it's also on our website. Um, any questions from Ms. Akisian, before we move on? All right, uh.
Yeah, there's a question.
Okay, I didn't see any hands up, okay, this is a funny question, I'm sorry, chapter.
Okay, I'll quiet my song.
Yeah.
Uh, to the queen, I just want to understand, which machine, uh, sewing machine are you talking about? Are you talking about the industrial or the regular sewing machine that is costing one hundred and eighty thousand naira? Which one are we talking about?
I want to say that it was the manual, the manual sewing machine, but that was for the total of, of four sewing machines.
Oh, okay, I was going to suggest, because, uh, the women here in Atlanta. Uh, we're just sponsoring, uh, some people back home. I think if you purchase the, um, if you have enough money to purchase the industrial sewing machine, that will save them a lot of purpose. The other one, if you have something like with stones and things, it's difficult to use. So you can think about it, and then people that are donating should think about that too, if you have enough money. I would suggest we purchase, uh, an industrial machine, I bought one for somebody at New York, it's just doing very good in that. So think about that, and then I've seen here, oh, what you said, if, Ebebio. Yeah, we are brothers and sisters, um, I like the language. And we are from a Quibum, and we are doing it the Quibum way. Why don't you, why don't we just concentrate on the Ebebio, since that is what is understood, in a Quibum state? And then work on that before we maybe expand to the aqua cross kind of a thing. So I think, uh, if we deal with the Ebebio language, it will be better at this time, so think about that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Auntie, um, thank you for the suggestion in regards to the sewing machines. Um, being that I'm not well versed in it, I'm definitely willing to take any recommendations. As to what would be a smarter move, a better financial move, um, in regards to purchasing these things. Um, as far as the language, the language is being taught in, um, Ebebio. So, um, the lady, though she understands and speaks other, um, different formalities of the language. She will be teaching the language in Ebebio, and if there's any students that want to speak their specific, specific, um, tongue. Then she is willing to meet with them outside of class to help them learn that as well. But the main target while we are in class learning together is Ebebio.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, um, two more hands are up, one is Dr. Basubon Idio. Uh, and then, uh, Ma Gloria Uda, so in that order.
Okay, um, Abasubon Idiom speaking now, I appreciate the, uh, means Akisian. The, uh, expression, but in terms of, uh, the language, she was kind of, um. I observed that she was kind of saying that the Ebebio language is almost being extinct. No, the Ebebio language is the fourth largest, uh, 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 ethnic group in Nigeria. The thing is that we have not been coming out to promoting our language, so the ethnic and Ebebio. Have some similarities, but the Ebebio languages, at the moment, they are a- actually professing it, and they have been. It is being used in, in the state, uh, 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 greatly, so. That language cannot be extinct, because we are the fourth largest ethnic group, so I want you to understand. And then do some research, Google the Ebebio language, and you'll find out that we are the full largest ethnic group. And you can't get it extinct, so it's just a point of observation, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, points are noted, um, last but not least, Ma Gloria Uda. But, uh, not ready on where you located, sorry.
I am at the moment in, uh, Albany, New York. I'm, um, I'm a professor of, of, uh, community development. And Cornell University, I'm, I'm actually a distinct professor, but I'm, I'm staying in the country at the moment. Hello?
Yeah, I don't know, we lost the national president, um, thank you, Professor, uh. Glory, I see your hands up, if you have any questions for the, uh. The year president, until we, until we have the president back. Thank you, so.
Um, thank you so much, um, but, I'm from Atlanta, Georgia. And coordinator, miss, uh, for Mr. Quibum and Mr. Quibum. Um, I just want to acknowledge, uh, you guys to know that, um, uh, please, like she said. Um, let everybody support, because things are hard right now, and to be honest, Grace have done a lot. Most especially, um, I have been here representing, uh, being coordinator for Atlanta for many years. But Grace is the only one that put all the queens together and recognized them and called them together. And during the end of the year party, um, she was able to put, you know, at least she recognized me for the first time. Um, we have been winning, we won the most number of Mr. Quibum in United States. I have nine of them, national queen, and then to, back to back to Mr. Quibum. So, um, please, I encourage you guys, she's doing the best, I have best to make sure the youth come together. And, um, she is down to it, because we went to Nigeria with her, and I've, I've been with others too. That I see that she has that interest, she's, she worked like, uh, I, um. Sometimes she turned to be a mother to others, because she advised, she's, she adjusts. And she's able, she's willing to do whatever it takes, um, to bring the youth together, to, to do the right thing. I- if, if somebody advised her, so at the same time, I really, really appreciate her, and please, I, I plead. With her for everybody to help chip in, please, thank you so much. I only want, wanted to say that, to bring that to everybody's attention.
All right, thank you very much, Ma Gloria Uda of Atlanta, and.
Thank you, Auntie.
Kudos to Atlanta chapter for the world record set, hopefully other chapters can emulate for the glory of Akisian. All right, um, next topic will be, as I mentioned at the beginning. We always like to use this town hall to also intimate the general membership with respect to policies and constitutional changes that may be coming down the pipeline. Such issues are discussed at the council meeting, debated, and then approved if necessary. And then those that are approved then go to the convention for ratification. So on that note, we'd like to bring on the secretary of the council of chapter presidents slash chair of the constitution committee. Mr. Huete to present, uh, what we should be expecting at the council meeting, April fifteenth in Dallas, Texas, so Mr. Huete, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I've quite my song.
Yeah.
I've quite my song.
Yeah.
No. Is a, is a, is a hard, is a hard act to follow, so first of all, I want to just recognize our president. Uh, our B O T chair, as well as, uh, chapter council, councilor chapter. Council of chapters, uh, president speaker, uh, who's also, uh, doing a double take. He's also the chairman of the upcoming convention as well, I have a heart for the youth, so I really appreciate. Uh, the passion and the drive and the energy, uh, that I'm seeing that. Uh, this young lady, who I really do not know, except for, I was there when she was, uh, voted to be Miss Akisian, is putting forward to actively reach out to the youth. So, so here's what I'll do, I will support you with one thousand dollars. So that will be my support.
Wow, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I will support you one thousand dollars, so I, I see that you have a passion for the youth, and I always have a heart. The fact, the fact that you're willing to go out there and do what you're doing, uh, is something that is heartwarming.
God bless.
Okay. And thank you, no, no, so let's, uh, so the constitution committee is. Uh, where we do the needed reading, I'm going to be a little bit casual today, if you don't mind, Mr. President, since we don't have. I think I'm probably one of the last people going, so I'm gonna be a little casual. It's really what we do, the needed reading, things that are difficult to discuss in other environment, they bring it to the constitution committee for us to try to craft policy. At the end of the day, what we really do is we're serving the needs of the people, that's really what we're doing with the constitution committee. A lot of the work that we did during the last dispensation of the constitution change, which was passed in twenty twenty one, was a hard job. The lot, the work that we're really doing now, I call it, is really, uh, some cleanup work, some plugging the holes and clarifying. So you may see eight or ten things, but we don't have big things to do. We did the big things last time, now, let's see how we clean up some things and make the organization move forward. The very first slide that you're looking at is really for the benefit of those who probably were not part and parcel of the changes that happened in twenty twenty one. So I just want to do a quick review, we had basically restructured Akisian to have three major lanes. The councilor chapter president lane, which is headed by the speaker. The national executive state, which is headed still by the president, and the B O T states, which is headed by the board chair. And collaboratively, they walk and they actually report become part of what we call the national council. The lane that belongs to the councilor chapter president, because when you think about it, all members come through chapters, the way Akisian is formulated is that. There is no direct membership, all members belongs to a chapter. So if you want to be a part of Akisian, you have to be a member of a chapter, so that lane is where all the policies may, because the policy impacts all the members. And the lane of the national president is where he does the execution, he chairs the national council, he runs the convention. He helps grow the association and any other project, the national president actually execute or lead the execution of those projects. The lane that belongs to the board, which is the land that you see there, is where we have financial responsibility, the board, the board is our custodian. We give them, the constitution gives them the fiscal, the fiduciary responsibility about our money, and so they're engaged. If anything is to do with legal impacted association, the board should be engaged in that. In anything to do with policy, the board is involved in that, and so that is why in the constitution committee. We have permanent members from each one of these bodies, and we also have the legal council. Legal council has a uniqueness to it in that the legal council truly is there to serve the organization. The man, they, that individual may have been appointed by the president or whoever, but at the end of the day. The legal council owes, owes allegiance to the organization as a whole, that individual calls it like she sees it. So the interest that she serves is for the benefit of the organization, that is why the legal council, for the most part, does not vote on most matters. Provide counsel, provide guidance, it provides advice, but it really doesn't vote, because. The legal council is there to serve the interests of the organization, and you'll see the same thing repeat for position like internal audit. They're there to serve the organization, not really hold anyone individually, not really hold allegiance to anyone individual. So what you're looking at there is the new structure of Akisian, and when we restructure it, we took some work of the president. And put some of that in the pol- and the, in the councilor chapter president lane, which is, uh, policy team. And the policy team, when they're finished, that thing bubbles back up to the national council, which is represented in three bodies. Which in essence, all the allegiance to the convention, and the convention represents your membership as well. So that's, I just, that's a quick review of that structure, you can look at it, familiarize, familiarize yourself with it. Because that's really how Akisian is organized today. So let's go to the next slide. So really, what we're discussing, like I said, we don't really have any big, big, big things to do, we did the big things last time. Uh, is really clarification, on the first item, there says, clarifying the power of the national council and the national president. In setting future conventions, the constitution already gave those two bodies, the national council, as well as the national president. The ability to set conventions, it does that already, the issue that has been brought forward to the committee is that sometimes we don't have enough lead time, right? That's one thing, and then the other area was an area that we missed when we created the second term for the president. Lead time was an issue, what is, we need to give at least, because this is the biggest project, the convention is the biggest project that we execute. I just, the fact, we need time to prepare, yes, we should be good at it, but we should be an expert in this, that we switch around different places. Uh, it's a different team sometimes that plan it, different chair that plans it, so it doesn't have complete, it, it, it's not a complete turnover process. Where you say you just, you, you know, it turn the engine on, you redo it the same thing, so it is the biggest project that we plan. So the key there is, we need enough lead time to get it done, and then we need somebody come, coming in. Where they don't have to do too much heavy lifting for everything, so what we've done is to clarify the area that we've missed. We clarify the second term for the president, because the constitution already gives the president, the council, the ability to set those conventions. What we are recommending is, give the president time when he comes into such convention, we should have about two years of lead time. To determine where the convention should be, when it should be, who's gonna host it, and things like that, so that's really what we're looking at in terms of. In terms of clarifying the power of the national council and the president setting convention, one is set by the president every two years. And one is set by the national council every two years, that's how it's organized, we didn't change that. Clarifying, number two, clarifying the power of the national council and the national president slash escort setting the future, future council meetings. That one, I'm really, when I, when I say national, it's, I'm really just referring to the president. The constitution actually gives the power to set council meeting to the president, and it does specify that it should be done on rotation. Chapter to chapter to chapter. The issue is that. Aspect of rotation was never clarified. So what we're looking for is how we clarify, so it doesn't bring confusion. So some people don't think that this is some, it's kind of secret thing that's going on. So that's what we're looking at, rotation, and also giving up lead time so that people will have enough to prepare. Number three, B O T position prevailing in conflict about matters vested with the board. This is an area that I can basically square on the changes that we made, uh, in the twenty twenty one constitution changes. We, in the previous constitution, prior to twenty twenty one, things that were vested on the board. Board had the superior position if there was conflict. So what happened was, when we made the constitutional changes, we did take that away, we basically said the board escalated to the national council. By that, by doing so, what really happens is that almost every position of the board, if they don't have a political, uh, what do you call it? If they don't have a, a enough people on their side, will be overridden. So basically, what really, the, the, the result is, the board position really becomes irrelevant. And if you really think about it, it really renders the board incapacitated to do anything. Because if they make a decision and they escalate to council and they don't have the numbers, they're gonna be overridden. So this was a mistake, I, in my opinion, it's a mistake that was made. The board position as to things that are vested in the board, which is really being custodian to our money, being physically responsible to our money. You think about it, all these years, if you, and I don't wanna, I don't want to really. Blame any one president. The board is probably the one stable, stable. Organ of Akisah that has been for all the years, for all the issues, for those of you are familiar with Akisah. The board is probably one area that has stability, and the board tenure is actually longer than just about any other tenure. They get to serve three years for term, and they can serve six years. So the stability needs to go back to the board. So to me, we need to go back and go back to the language of how it was prior to the twenty twenty one change. Uh, completing code, code of conduct and conflict of interest policy. Now, this is a area that, you know, recently has come up in different ways, uh, it's come up because. Uh, I'm just gonna put it out there, that some people are seeking political office. Or that some people are getting contracts within the organizations. So the issue is that we need to clarify what our policy is in those regards. So we're not against, the policy committee is not here to deter people from being ambitious. We're not here to stop somebody from seeking a career, that's not what we're about. What the policy committee is looking into is, what behavior can we write policy to regulate? So that whatever you're doing does not have a negative impact to the organization. So, uh, and it's a little tricky, there's always this fine line, because there will be some time that you have conflict. In any nonprofit that you're doing something, there will be times that you, but the question is, does that conflict rise up to the level that is detrimental to the, to the organization? Sometimes the best people you find is inside, especially like, we're an ethnic based organization. So when we're looking for things that are specific to us, chances are mostly we find them within ourselves. The question is, when we do that, the, would there have been alternatives? That is just as good or better? If there isn't, then you need to go with what you have. But so we have to figure out how to have this language like that. We clarify what conflict is. Most of the time, and I would just tell you, is really expectations, what are we expecting from the other person? And sometimes the easiest thing you can do with this situation is just disclose, I've got an interest to do this. You have a problem with that? So you lay everything out at that time, so everybody knows what is going on, and that solves the problem. So we are just trying to figure out how, what, what language do we come up with that regulates behavior? So that we can avoid this conflicting type situation, or minimize any possible negative impact to the organization. A couple of these things, five and six really has to do with our finances. Uh, last council meeting, we approved a budget that was, uh, expenses that were way in excess of what we're able to take in or what we projected to take in. Akisah should not be budgeting to spend any more money than they have. It's just like you, you can't spend money you don't have, it's just common sense. So we need to go back. And, and if this, if it requires a policy to do that, which I think you shouldn't, but if it does require a policy to do that, then we need to go write a policy that says. You can't expect to spend more money than you have, that's called bankruptcy, it's simple. So, and then the other thing about, about committing Akisah to expenses, it should be very clear, there's really two, there's really two lanes that have first in Akisah. The national president and the board. The national and the board, there's the two lanes that really have firsts. So within those two leadership structures where all expenses should be approved. If you don't have commitment to have expenses approved within those two lanes, you shouldn't be spending money on behalf of Akisah and coming back to ask us for money. If you do that, then probably you're just making a donation. So we need to make, we enforce our own rules. Uh, we can't have people spend money and then come and ask us for money when we did not approve those expenses. So we need, besides just travel policy, we need a true expense policy that we can enforce. Uh, there's also number seven about active or inactive chapters, there's a lot of inactive chapters in Akisah. We have people who will be gone for three years and they show up, and they have all the rights and privileges like people who have stayed here all the time. So we need to clarify what that is. You shouldn't have, you shouldn't have the same benefit as somebody who's been there. All the time, and then you show up once in a while and you think you have all the rights. They, we, we, we need to have clarity, yes. What does it mean to be active? What is the benefit to be active? What, how do you get reinstated if you're not active? What is the consequences that? We need to clarify those things. So, so far. We have a number of chapters that are really not active, and any once in a while they show up. Or sometimes they don't even show up, and they're still there, they're in a chapter, a council president forum, they're in a joint council forum. They show up once in a while in a convention, they have the same rights and privilege as somebody who's been active all this time. So we need to clarify what that means, so that we will all at least be treated fairly. And the last one, I think, um, there was a gentleman from DC, I believe, that was dancing on this one. So here's what I say about any relationship, is a give and take. Relationships are give and take. If you give, and you give, and you give, and you, you can take this, you can, in fact, most of you who are married on this call, you can see how that works. If you give all the time and you don't get anything back, at some point in time you will stop giving. So what Akisah is no different. If you look at the chapters, they're like states, and the national is like the federal government. Right? The chapters pay in, they pay in, they pay in, they pay. At some point in time, if there's nothing coming back from the national organization. The chapters may stop giving. Is, to me, is not a sustainable model to be a one-sided gift. So we, whether that gift is tangible or not tangible. There has to be some renaissance back from who is getting. So there has to be a give and take. So what we're trying to think here is, how do we structure Akisah? So there's that relationship of give and take, something that encourages each other, you know, to put more in, because the idea is put more in. So when you take out, you have extra left. So those are the things that we're talking about in the constitution committee. We've actually already taken a position on the first three already, and we're walking through the last, the last five at this particular juncture. Mister President, that concludes the end of my presentation. If any questions, I can take at this time.
All right, thank you very much, Mister Chair slash Mister Secretary CCP. Thanks for that presentation. Uh, to everyone, before I open it up for questions, and I already see a hand up, I've always said that. In order to change Akisah and probably things in life in general, we have to start from the root. If we keep on chopping off the branches, I'm wondering why the tree is still not healthy, maybe it's because of the root and. Probably, the only one thing that is above us raising money through donations, it's the structure. So we need to get the structure right, which in turn will encourage people to, for example, donate to the association. So I, I wanna thank all the members of the constitution committee for the work they've done. They meet, I believe, is it once every two weeks on the clock? And, uh, like I said, in Dallas, at the upcoming council meeting, they will be presenting all these issues for debate slash approval. And of course, it'll move on to the, those that pass will then move on to the conventional ratification. So if you have any questions, other than I think Dr. Idiom with his hand up, please ask him this time. So Dr. Idiom, over to you.
Thank you very much. Um, the gentleman had spoken well about. Uh, the constitution and all of that. I have observed that. Organizations shouldn't be following the, uh. The way things are being done in Nigeria, we are in the United States. We should be able to understand that certain state or certain constituencies here. Who are unable to meet up with the demands in terms of, uh, dues and all of that, should be given, should be looked. Into, to find out those who are seriously interested in the organization. And this organization shouldn't be a do or die affair, like what happens in Nigeria. It should be open to all. In terms of finances, um, I think every, everyone has a right to develop a project. For his own constituency back home, if it is gonna be in Nigeria, but it's gonna be here, you know how things are done in the United States. Anybody can come up with ideas and get raised for, this idea will be looked into and, uh, 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 and, uh, people will contribute to its success. So I, I, I look at it. That drafting a constitution to benefit certain groups of people, certain donors, is not what we are looking at in the twenty first century. We are looking at any development that can reach the, the nooks and crannies of areas where we live in. Because from what I have seen, the whole system is so politicized, it's almost like the Nigerian, you have to be a member, you have to have to so far, you have to do this. It's about, uh, a charitable thing, I, I think, I, I don't know if it's a charity or something, I haven't joined the organization yet. So we have to review some of the conditions. For, 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 for states would can do attitude, would people who can do attitude, who are willing to help. I've heard somebody donating a thousand dollars. To, uh, the, the Akisah, uh, Ms. Akisah, Akisah for her project. If the project is viable, what will be the benefit? If this money is given to the lady, what is she gonna achieve? How is it gonna benefit Akisah? Akisah me. So these are the areas we have to look into. We have to give priority to something that benefits certain communities or certain, uh, 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 local government. And in that local government, we have to look into, if there is a member of Akisah in the United States from that local government. Or from that village, we should encourage people to. Come out with a project that will be beneficial to his own village. And so that from his village, it can spread to other villages and to local government. That's what I, I'm just trying to say something, but it shouldn't be a draconian thing that you have to pay this, and you don't fix this, you can't fix. All the fingers are not equal. We need to look, review the whole write-ups, the whole positions. And not to operate like what is happening in Nigeria, is it, it's, it has always failed. Because it will benefit certain groups of people. So what we are trying, what I'm trying to emphasize is that, let's look into. The project that has been earmarked by Akisah, and then look at people who are genuinely. Interested in moving the, 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 the organization forward. And then we, we, we interplay and find out how to follow up. And then let's not put a ceiling that this has to be done based on approval and stuff like that. I have so much to do for my own community, and I think everybody has. So let people come up with ideas and think of what they have for their community that will be beneficial, and then we can sit down. Have, uh, 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 think over it and see if it is a project that can be supported, that is in terms of Nigeria. But in this country, if it is within this country, let's find out what will be benefit of that project to the organization here. I don't know, um, if I have made any sense, but I'm looking at what is the situation back home? How things are being carried out and how unsuccessful it has been? So let's not follow that, let's follow up what is operating here in the United States and do something accordingly. And, uh, I mean, let's not look into contributions. Any community that cannot contribute, and their interest, and we have to dig into it, if it comes out with a project for the community. And then we look at, into it and say, would this project be replicated in Akai Boom State? If, because the success story will come out that, that is not supported, this project in so, so place, and it was successful. So we can now, I said, my local government wants the same project, and then we can look into it and how to get it done, and that is the only way you can get success. But people seeking for positions in Nigeria and all of that is there, it shouldn't be based on trying to do a project so that you can get a position in Nigeria. It's, it's, it's not something I want to, sorry, um.
Well, let's respond to the, let's respond to your question, because I know you, you're, you've covered a lot. By the way, your name is Idiom, which is actually my uncle's name, so no, do you have identity? So, uh, my uncle is Idiom too, so, um. So let me, uh, Mister President, allow me to respond to his point, if you don't mind.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
So, this, so, in, the way we, the way the US organizations are organized, we are, we are organized. As an IRS, uh, you may not know all these terms, is really a tax exempt organization, we're based, we're organized in the United States as a tax exempt organization. And so that means we have to follow certain regulations, rules and regulations in how we do things. And one of those rules and regulations requires us to be accountable, we file taxes every single year. It also promotes that we have to have membership, part of where we raise our funds is through our membership. So, while with, while one of the, the passion that we have is to go back home and give back, really, one of the main mission of the organization. Is that those of us who are blessed here go back to give back, like what a young lady is just doing, this Akisah is doing, she's actually blessed here. And she's using her talent to go back and do something, even though she's doing it through Akisah promotion, that's what, that's part of the organization. But even when she does that, she still has to owe accountability back to this organization. So we are organized as a US-based nonprofit entity or A G O, and we do have to follow some regulations. And part of our organization requires membership, and part of our organization requires filing some documentation every year to prove that we're doing what we're setting back. If you use the money that you get, uh, to do other things, you can, you can run a follow-up. So we, it's not that we, we're not really operating like an Nigerian institution. I mean, there may be areas that we need to refine, uh, but there are some guidelines that we have to follow as a nonprofit entity based in this country.
Oh, beautiful, thank you. I, yeah, are, are you done?
Yes, yes.
Oh, is, I totally understood, I, I, I am very appreciative of your explanation. The only reason why I came up with that, uh, issue was that you have to be able to understand that. Membership, committed membership of these entities should be known, and then you can work with them. Those who are defaulting are not to come in, so that you can now concentrate on the area so as to meet up with your constitution. Uh, with your, uh, 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 demand by the government. So don't take institutions, organizations that are not serious into it, so that you'll be able to know your income. If you do not know your income, how can you pay? That's what I'm trying to say.
You're agreeing with what we were proposing, what you say.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm asserting that, so. Uh, uh, we shouldn't put any pressure on any, any, uh, uh, any, 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 uh, constituency. But what I'm trying to say is that, for you to be successful, if you are waiting for people who, who has no can-do attitude, I mean. They are gonna cause you to fail. So what you want, we want to do is to succeed. So we look at those areas that are interested in the success. If you see you default two times, if you default once in the United States, you are kicked out. So if you default, that means. So if you default, that means you are not serious. So if you are able to get the serious entity to work, I mean, that would be the best thing. And I think we are saying the same thing. So that's why I'm, I'm trying to clarify that. I don't want you to go and give something to where you should not give. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Dr. Idiom. And thank you, Mr. Hewitt, for your presentation. Looking forward to the presentation slash debate at the council meeting. We'll be ending at one thirty Eastern, which I believe is ten thirty on the West Coast. We have one more presentation to go. And that is for the Education slash Scholarship Committee by the Chair, Dr. Victoria Udogwu. Dr. Udogu, are you on?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm, I'm on.
All right, very good. Please proceed.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Akwabom is on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a pleasure and a privilege to be on, on the line today. And I just wanted to thank Mr. President for, is, and actually the whole of the council for believing in our team to allow us to do this one more time. And we promise to do it with all our might and integrity. So today I just wanted to present, and I think I have some team members on the line, Mr. Atamasiu, Mr. Jerry, Dr. Jerry, Seanoam, I see you. I think, yeah, okay. So anyways, this is what we've done so far for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Actually, twenty-three scholarship, scholarship awards. So we were presented with terms of reference again by the National President and thank you so much, Mr. Turok Wani Kuo. Thank you so much for always believing in us. So on behalf of the Acquabom State Association of Nigeria, Akisani Inc., I extend, I feel appreciation, all that. And then this is a term of reference that the approved budget for this year is fifteen thousand. The terms of reference for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four scholarship program for tertiary school students in Nigeria. Offering at most two scholarship per local government area, requirement should be tiered such that should no student qualify based on one tier. The next year should be used to qualify the students. Extending the scholarship program for Nigerian recipients such that it covers students of Akwabom state origin, not just in Akwabom state, but all over Nigeria. Offering at least five scholarships to students of Akwabom state origin in the United States. Seeking external funding for the scholarship program to supplement Akisani USA's funding, similar to efforts on that taken for the last scholarship program. And actually, before I move on, I wanted to appreciate Ms. Akisani. I'm so proud of you. Good job, good job, good job. And Mr. Akisani, thank you for what you guys are doing and we are going to support you and please everyone support them. Those young people are doing so well. And so anyways, so now I move back to what I was saying, advertising. So we, the scholarship application will be made available, which I think the president already, when I had published it to Akisani National Council to be published on the website. I saw it on the website and on Facebook as well. We will also utilize other mediums for isn't namely the Akwabom Broadcasting Corporation, local newspapers in Akwabom states. We will post it on various social media platforms. We'll send it to schools, especially in Akwabom states. And we're also soliciting well-meaning people of Akwabom state to post the applications on all their social media platforms or any other appropriate platform. So I'm using this opportunity to ask each and every one of you. Please copy those applications, post it, blast it on your platforms. Extend it to anyone you know and it's about to come up here now. So pretty much this is what I'm reading to you. So can you move it please to the scholarship, just so they see what it looks like? Okay, so please stop right there. So the green one is for students in Akwabom states. So pretty much this one is, it just says, it's pretty much almost what, what it was last year with just a little difference. Because this year we're supposed to make, make it possible for as many students in Akwabom state to get it as opposed to the twelve because of the criteria we were using last year. So this year we're doing it a little bit different. So it's going to be two students from each local government area. And they just says Akisani USA Inc. invites Akwabomites studying in any institution of higher learning, college of education, polytechnic, maritime academy, universities in Nigeria, and it's all over Nigeria, not just Akwabom state. So any student from, of Akwabom origin in studying in any institution of higher learning is invited to apply. To apply for a one-time scholarship award valued with the following GPA. So this is a GPA we came up on, three point five and above, you get hundred thousand Naira. GPA is three point oh to three point four nine, it's seventy-five thousand era. GPA is two point five to two point nine nine gets fifty thousand. Of course, we're going to give it to the one that has the best GPA and the best essay. So from each local government area, we choose two students with, with a mix that are qualified and meet our criteria. And it says scholarship will be awarded to two, same thing I just said, two qualified applicant from each of the thirty-one local government areas of Akwabom state. So I'm encouraging everyone, please tell all those from every local government area in Akwabom state, please apply. Interested applicants must completed, complete the online application form available on the Akisani web portal, www.akisani.org. Application must be accompanied by a letter of recommendation, certificate of origin, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year transcript. That's what we will accept by undergraduate students or YAC results for first year undergraduate students only. And, and essay between hundred, hundred words will have to accompany the application. And everything is done online as they apply and then they submit as the online. The deadline for application submission is May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And so pretty much, like I said, the timeline for the timeline is for the application to be out. The scholarship application is March thirteenth to May thirty-first. But it's, I think it's already out. So to ensure national statewide and local coverage, the team will review also June first to June thirty-first, to July thirty-first. Names of successful applicants will be announced at the twenty twenty-three convention that's scheduled for August twenty twenty-three in San Diego. So please, 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 I'm just, I'm just imploring everyone, please take those application. Can you move on to the US one? The US one is blue. So Nigerian application is green, US application is blue. So it says, Akisani, same thing, is inviting every Akwabomite studying in any of the United States of America, institution of higher learning, universities, colleges, community colleges to apply for one-time scholarship award valued at five hundred dollars. To be awarded to ten successful applicants with a GPA of three point oh and above. And same thing, we want the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three transcripts, same applicant, every applicant was applied with an essay submitted. And I'll let, let you know what the topic of the essay is in just one minute. And it says, we need letter of recommendation, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three school transcript by the, or high school results for the first year undergraduate students only. And an essay between five hundred and eight hundred words. The deadline for application is the same thing is May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We will not accept any application after that deadline. So please endeavor to all the chapter president, I'm imploring you as well, please endeavor to let all your chapter members know if they have a child in any high institution of learning or one just finishing high school, getting into college, please go ahead and apply. It's, I mean, it's available for everyone and for you all. The topic is going to be if any of my education people is here and they want to talk, please go ahead and talk. The, the topic is why is education important in an Akwabom household? Why do you think education is critical, important, extremely important in a, in an Akwabom household? Because our children here, the first thing they know is they have to go to school. So why is it so important? In Nigeria, I don't care if your parents are rich, poor or whatever, everybody even and they live with pockets to go to school. So why do we think education or why do they think education is so important in an Akwabom household? And pretty much that's it. Over to you, Mr. National President.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Dongu, for that presentation. And thank you to the members of the Scholarship Committee. Before I handed over to questions and I see Engineer Kicko, your hand is up. I just wanted to iterate the fact or emphasize the fact that based on some of the issues that came up last time, we did do a lessons learned. And one of them was in the area of publicity, especially as we're going nationwide as opposed to last year where we limited it to Akwabom state. So to that effect, in addition to all the social media platforms, we're going to put it on TV, on a print newspaper in Nigeria. We're also, thanks to the board chair, had the contact, I believe, the P R O of the National Association of Akwabom Students in Nigeria. I spoke with her today and she has put that out in all platforms, WhatsApp platforms, Facebook of their members. So this will go much wider. Of course, we expect more applications, which is a good thing. And hopefully, you know, we've learned from all the mistakes we made last time. And then if anything crops up this year, we will lessons learned accordingly. So thank you once again, Dr. Dongu. And Engineer Kicko, your question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Dongu, great to see you. Thank you to you and your team on the great work with the scholarship. I did have a couple of questions. Mr. Prince already, you know, proactive addressed it. So thank you on the team on the lessons learned from what happened last year. So that's, that's taken care of. The second one is really a comment to the broader team, which is please work with this scholarship team to learn the selection criteria that they could forth. There were some discussions last year where the team held to the selection criteria. And they were challenged to, why didn't they modify that selection criteria since it didn't yield enough awardees? And I, I commend the team, they held to the ground and said, yep, this is the selection criteria and this is what we're going to use to choose. So just wanna, you know, we're, we're back here again. So the second one, we're going to comment to the team to work with that team, understand the selection criteria that will yield those results. And that's the blueprint in which to select the awardees. So it's not changing the game in the middle of the game. So, so just a comment, but thank you to you and the team for the great work as we start another scholarship.
Madame, Madame Chair, let me answer that question of comment for that.
I didn't have a question, it's just a comment.
I know, I want to comment, I want to comment on that. This is Michael Lethem from Philadelphia. Now, a lot of information was passed on to the committee last year. And I think this year we took a lot into consideration. We took a lot of the information into consideration. And we tried to incorporate the fact that last year we only had twelve students from Akwabom that received a scholarship and only, and only three from the US. So in order to widen the scope, we decided to give more on the criteria and say, hey, based on what we received last year, we're going to widen that scope based on the applications we receive. That way we'll get more students to win more of the scholarship, the same thing in America. But in the American section, we only receive, I think, three, three applications in all. Only three students applied and those three students were able to make the cut. So we encourage the people, the students from America to apply and submit the application as early as possible. I, I know a bunch of Akwabomites that go to school and they're good at what they do. They're good students and great A students in all their academics. So we will encourage the American students to apply. I know the money is not too much. At least it's enough to buy a textbook, one textbook or even more to. On the Nigerian side, what we want to do is make sure that each local government or each local government gets at least two students. Now the criteria is this, we may not get two students that win the hundred thousand from the same local government. It could be one student that win a hundred thousand and another student that win maybe fifty thousand. But at least we want to make sure that every local government is well represented. Now, if we go through the criteria of selection and we don't get two students or at least one student from one government that meet that criteria. Then we'll expand it to other local government to include them getting either an extra student to make it three. But in the long run, we'll still have to make sure that we get sixty-two students. Now, those are the kind of things that we came up with and said, we need to make sure that every every student and every application is is scrutinized and well looked at so that we can expand the number of students that win the scholarship. So I hope I'm able to explain it the best way I can on this. But we can talk about this in details at the, at the council meeting, which I'll be more than happy to help explain further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atam. Dr. Jerry Seanoam of Atlanta. If you're speaking, you're on mute. Dr. Seanoam, your hand is up.
Dr. Seanoam.
While we wait to hear from him, I just wanted to let everyone know that while Dr. Dongu was presenting, I did put up the direct link to the scholarship application in the Zoom chat. Of course, again, it's on our website.
Mr. National President, can I say something, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to, to express my gratitude to Engineer Kicko one again, because what the point he brought up was very critical. So last year we were, we were given a term of reference. We go by the term of reference. We don't, we don't go right or left from that term, term of reference. So whatever we were tasked with, that's what we did. We didn't move right or left. Same thing happens this year. So pretty much like Mr. Atamas rightfully explained, that's what was discussed. You know, so we are encouraging people from, I mean, in your local government, please make sure every, the students apply. Because now we're going to be the one tasked and burdened with going through all this, because there's going to be lots of application. But we want to make sure that, we want to ensure that each local government has two students. Now, I, when people come up to say, why didn't you give it to the student that made one, one point oh GPA? Well, it's not on that thing. It says two point five and above. So that's, that's what I want everybody to know. We, we are held by the highest level of integrity and we're not going to try to, to to cut corners just to make sure that people get it. But we're going to try our best to make sure as many students as, as we can give it to get it. That's, that, that's what we want everyone to know.
Yes, thank, thank you very much, Dr. Dongu. So just to follow up on what she said. Yes, we come up with a terms of reference. We noticed after the fact that there were some issues, we had lessons learned session, we've built that into this second iteration. Hopefully there are no more issues, but we live and learn. And so if anything else crops up, we'll keep on iteratively integrating those lessons learned until we get to the perfect spot. But for now, we're building upon what we learned last time. Dr. Seanoam, your hand is up. We'll give you one more opportunity before we dismiss.
Yeah, you guys, I believe you guys hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I want to commend our team. Because you, you guys know that I'm ex, uh, National President. I have seen a lot, but this is the first time our team they walk like, let me say like a hell. When we have a meeting, our chair lady, she gave us opportunity to go and put on everything that we have. She gave us, we, we scrutinize and deal it back. So we are not plenty in number, but the few numbers that we have, we work very hard. The chair lady and all our team members, they gave us opportunity to say whatever we want to say. So I want you guys to know that. So we are working hard. We will continue to work hard until this, the term of this administration is over. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. And yes, for those who may not know, Dr. Jerry Seanoam former National President, I believe ninety-six to ninety-seven. So we thank you for your service. Thank you for everything you did. Which is one of the reasons that encouraged me to also run for president pretty much twenty years later. So thank you very much. Sorry. Any other questions for Dr. Dongu? Because we're about to close for the day. And again, I put the link to the scholarship form in the Zoom chat. It's on the website and we'll also spread it everywhere. If not, it is one thirty-five PM Eastern, I believe ten thirty-five AM on the West Coast. I want to thank each and every one of us for joining this Zoom call today. It is recorded. We will release the transcript later within twenty-four hours on the website and our social media pages. Again, we are because you are, you are because we are. If you have any issues, questions, feedback, whatsoever, channel them through your chapter presidents and then it will get to us on the national or you can call us directly. Either one is your choice. We hope we've done well so far. We hope to do even better in the months and years to come. Finally, council meeting Dallas, April fifteenth, convention August, August ten to August thirteen. We look forward to seeing all of you at those events. Thank you very much and remember us until we meet next time. Thank you.